All right, welcome everyone. Let's call this meeting to order. Township of Warminster Board of Supervisors, Thursday, September 7th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for, I usually say, our servicemen and women and civilians overseas. I'd just like to, whatever you want to have a moment of silence for in your own mind, that's fine. All right, we'll start with announcements. We did have executive session prior to this meeting. We discussed litigation, personnel issues, and some real estate litigation, I believe. Was that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for tonight. Okay.
I have no announcements tonight, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Martha?
The only thing I have, Mr. Chair, and I want to remind everyone about the VE Oktoberfest this coming Saturday. I believe it's 11:00 to 10:00 p.m.?
11:00 to 8:00.
11:00 to 8:00.
Yes.
You can buy wristband right at the gate. I think it's $5 ahead to get in. And it's all day long, and it's German music and German food, and it's a great time. It's a really great neighborhood event. I just want to remind everyone.
Ditto.
Janice?
I just want to say hi to everybody, and it's nice to see all the children getting back on the buses to go to school, so that's been exciting. So, everything seems to be going pretty well. So, just be mindful of the kids at the bus stop because they're not paying attention to you, so look out for them. So, thank you.
All right, thanks, Ms. Judy.
Yeah, I want to remind people that we're having a fall food truck and music fest at the community park in favor of, it will benefit the Ben Wilson Center. It's going to be fabulous, all kinds of good food there, and featuring the Sports Car Club of America exhibit and Blue Comet Motorcycle Club. So, that should be a lot of fun. That's September 16th from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. And on September 30th, we're having a Bucksmont Veterans Expo, all kinds of veterans issues, veterans resources, and representatives are going to be there, and employment opportunities, and that's going to be at the VE Club at 130 Davisville Road from 11:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, September 30th.
Is that it? All right, thanks, Judy. All right, we're going to, do we need a motion to table the proclamation?
I don't think so.
No? All right, we want to table the proclamation at this point.
Just because it's not ready yet.
Yeah, I believe so.
So, we can do it at the next meeting.
Right, right. Okay, and, what's that?
Well, I think it's not ready yet, so we can all, as the supervisors, sign it when it's ready, and we can pass it at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right? Is that right, Jess? We can do it that way?
Yes. All right, speaking of Jessica Fox, our Parks and Rec Director, you have the floor.
I will go quickly, as the beginning of football season is today, and I know a lot of people are ready to-
I had no idea.
-get home in front of the TV. So, as you all know, we have Warminster Day coming up, September 23rd. We have a lot of things planned for Warminster Day. We are at approximately 90 vendors this year, so that's going to be a really fun element. It's about three times what we've had before, so it'll be awesome. Come out and check out our artisan vendor row. We have all ages entertainment. We have two bands that day in the main tent, along with hatchet throwing, photo booth. Our Canines will be out, they'll be doing a demo. We don't have a time for that yet, but check our website. We'll have that up as soon as we have a time for that. Inflatable rides. This year, we added Bucks Bubbles, so we'll be having a foam party at this event.
Not the foam that they used to put the fires out of?
Not that. No, not that.
There's pictures somewhere we have here. They just actually open the gates and let people in. Kids end up swimming in that stuff.
Yeah, that's not a good idea. So, yeah, no, this is a non-toxic foam party.
Right, good.
We'll also, in the children's tent, have Cool Beans Music and Drumming Circle. And this year, we added the Elmwood Park Zoo on Wheels. So, that's an exciting addition, too. Our Girl Scouts are going to be doing some crafts for us, so you can come out and do some free crafts. And our food vendors this year will be Chick-fil-A, Foxy's Funnels, who also do sweet potato and regular fries, Comfort Kitchen, Kona Ice, Nuts About Popcorn, and our park. And Friends of the Parks and Rec will be doing hot dogs, pretzels, and water to raise money for an additional shade sale near the new playground. So, stop by and see them and make your donations to the new shade sale. Everybody loves shade. Our schedule, I'm going to post this online, so we don't need to go through this in depth. You can see the foam party right there. It's pretty exciting. The only thing that is not in this schedule right now, as I said before, is the K-9 demo, which we will coordinate with Corporal O'Neill very soon. And we definitely want to thank our sponsors. We have some great sponsors this year. A lot of people stepped up to make this event happen, so thank you to all of our sponsors, especially our title sponsors, Gilmore and Associates and Pico Exelon. So, we could not make these events happen without the support of all of our sponsors, so thank you for that. Do we have any questions about Warminster Day? And then I'll touch on two other events really quick.
Just one, just for our residents, what are the hours?
Oh, yeah. So, 11:00 to 4:00. The event is 11:00 to 4:00, and you can see on the schedule that some of these activities will run all day, and then some of these things are intermittent. So, if you want to come see the magic show, you'll want to come later in the day. If you're more interested in Cool Beans Music, or you want to make sure you see the animals, you'll want to be there between 1:15 and 2:00. And we also have a PA Wilderness Search and Rescue Team is coming out. They are a nonprofit organization that does great work, and they'll be running the parking lot, so-
Oh, nice.
Stop and say hi to them. They'll have their Canines with them as well.
Great.
Any other Warminster Day questions?
No.
Okay, just two other events really quick that are coming up. Our golf outing has been moved to a Friday this year by popular demand, so it will be Friday, October 6th, at Five Ponds Golf Club. And then our Touch a Truck event is going to happen on Saturday, October 28th. And kids are encouraged to come in costume this year. We're going to have some trunk-or-treat elements to that with our trucks that are present.
Awesome stuff, Jess.
Any other questions? All good?
Just a comment to Touch a Truck, you know, I never miss an opportunity to give my friend Joe Cowie a plug.
Yes, yes. Oh, so we will, the day of Touch a Truck, we'll be dedicating the shade sale that was donated by Cowie Shop, right? We're very excited about that. We'll also be dedicating a rotary bench that day, and we will be dedicating our new bankshot backboards that were generously done for us by some of our local tradesmen, and we are so grateful for that. So, everybody come out and see them, because they'll be there that day, and we're very excited to give them a big thank you.
Are they back up now?
They will not be back up for a couple more weeks. We are actually field testing them in another location to make sure that we don't have to adjust rims and do things like that.
Okay.
So, yeah, so they'll be up in a couple weeks, and we have one more that needs to be repaired before that day.
For the public's edification, they were, that bank shot was donated by someone.
Correct.
And there was some vandalism over there, and some of the building trades stepped up to replace the ones that were damaged.
Yes, yeah, they did a wonderful job.
It's a shame that people do the vandalism and things like that. It's terrible.
Yeah, our tradesmen did a great job. They're really sturdy. I think they're going to be really great for a long time, so we're super grateful to them.
How do the colors look? Are they nice and bright?
Awesome. The colors are perfect. They did such a great job. They matched them perfectly, so thank you to the painters and sheet metal workers. Yes.
Oh, Jess, he's got it.
Hopefully, we'll get some cameras up over there at some point to try to cut down on that vandalism. And you said there's another one that was damaged, or was that vandalized?
That is just a kid that was hanging on it. It's not anything that needs to be complete repair. It's just getting a new, there's no permanent damage. We just need to put a new, a new net on.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Jess, I just wanted to thank you. You have done a phenomenal job since you've been the Director of Parks and Rec. I love the innovative ideas that you've thrown into our Warminster Day. I was looking at some of them, and I think people are going to have a lot of fun of all ages.
Yeah, I hope so.
So, I always want to thank you, because it's things that people don't see every day, just like our park. I tell people about the bank shot. I explain that to them. So, I just want to thank you, because you are innovative, and you're up to speed, and you've got great, great ideas and lots of fun for everybody. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
There are some things that work, and were wonderful, and we just continue to add to that and see what we can make better, so.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you, Jess.
You don't have to hang around. You go home for the football game now.
She's off and running.
All right, thanks, Jess. Okay. Doesn't look like we have any land use matters.
None.
All right, let's open it up to public comment. Come on up.
I sent an email to Jill, I believe, maybe.
I hear his name. What was your name?
What's your name, sir?
Austin.
Your last name?
Ryan, yeah. Shouldn't I actually introduce myself? Austin Ryan. So, I sent an email to-
Did you get that? Did you get that from the net? Can you spell your last name? I didn't hear it.
Ryan, R-Y-A-N.
Ryan, I'm so sorry.
No, it's all good.
My hearing.
So, I sent an email to, I believe, Jill. She's like the-
It's me.
Nope, you? Okay. Nice to meet you in person, maybe a few weeks ago, about a petition to slow down vehicles on Henry Ave. They tend to speed pretty quick, like over 40 miles an hour. We get, like, commercial vehicles speeding through there, too. It's like a residential street, so just, it's a petition. There's, I believe, 63 signatures asking the township to install stop signs at all the fourways, or if they deem necessary, anything else. The petition specifically calls out not using lane striping. The reason for that is it's a residential street, and using lane striping kind of gives ownership of that space completely over to cars. So, it kind of emboldens them to drive faster, because this is a major road at that point. It's like a perception thing. Yeah. I was just wondering if you guys received that?
Yeah, we did receive it, and the police department had reviewed the request, and now it's being reviewed by the township engineer.
Okay, sounds good. That's all I wanted to say, if you guys got it.
Well, I'll add, just, and I don't, it's not a topic for the agenda, but stop signs can't be used to control speeding, and, you know, so I don't want to get, we get a lot of that, where just add another stop sign, add another stop sign. I'll provide information to the township. I asked, the manager asked us to chime in on it, but I'm not going to weigh in on the petition. There's no formal process to petition. You can ask this board to look into it, but traffic calming is typically what is done or tried to accomplish, but, you know, we won't be recommending putting in stop signs, so, and I don't believe the Chiefs Department recommends that either. We get this request a lot, to just put in a stop sign to try to slow down. The state does not encourage that. There's plenty of regulations to back all that up, so, but we'll respond in regard to-
Well, yeah, one of the things that we're looking at, is there really a problem or not, is the surface question, and that's what both offices are looking into.
Okay, well-
Thank you.
It's under, we're looking into it, and it's a request we get, you know, a couple times a year, so-
Okay.
Each situation's different.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Pat Boyle, 6310 Centennial Station, and actually, it's the same topic. I'm getting questions about the speed limit sign on Norristown Road, I believe it is, that flashes and tells you how fast you're going, and how can they get that on Newtown Road?
I think we only have one.
Yeah, they change places.
We have two.
Oh, they change places? They change places from time to time where the word comes in. Yeah, because they were hoping that, you know, he would consider Newtown Road.
Is the one on, is the one permanent over there in Norristown? Is that?
There are, so, one's on Lake, one's on La College Drive, one's on Norristown Road. Not that you can't move it, we're just taking a little bit of time to move it.
Okay, because we've got to do something. It's just Speedway, you know? We're so glad it got paved, but now it's like worse. You know, we have six school bus stops along there, so that's an issue.
You can't win.
You know, the kids are waiting.
Yeah, you can never win.
No, you can't.
You pave the road, and it's a problem.
Yeah, I know, so, but it's just, I, it was bought to me, up to me about the signs, and I was just wondering if we could get it moved over. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Are we looking at calming methods there as well? No?
If you don't, this township, at least since I've been here, and it's not my decision, but I think everybody that's been at Public Works, or through the police, or our office, or you've had several different traffic engineers over the years, there are certain situations where traffic calming is a good, you know, a good implementation and measure to slow down speeding, but you have not actually taken on any traffic calming projects here, at least since I've been here.
Well, I think, and I'm sorry, I keep stepping on you.
It might be something to look into.
We have, we have, in the latest police department report, you'll see in there that there are some analysis of some streets, some local streets, heavily traveled local streets, that connect state roads, are being given details. And at some point, probably October or November, we'll have Chief Donnelly or his designate address the board on what those analyses have, are yielding.
Okay.
As far, and again, I want to state, the surface problem is, the surface question is, is there a problem? You know, are we seeing reckless driving, careless driving? Do we have other, you know, other accidents? Are there, whatever the criteria is?
I'm really curious, Dave.
So, we are looking at a lot of these places now, and then we'll get something from the, from the police department.
Yeah, you just haven't implement, yeah, Tom's right. They're all investigator looked at. I mean, there's definitely situations or locations in this township, everybody knows that there could be something done. There's pros and cons to any type of implementation of that, just like stop signs. I mean, we can put stop signs everywhere, they'll just see speeding in between them, and PennDOT does not encourage that. And we have to follow PennDOT standards as well, for liquid fuels purposes, so I know I always kick it back to PennDOT, but we do need to follow their regulations and recommendations. But every complaint is looked at by the staff. We just haven't moved any project to the point where you've actually done some construction and implementation.
But your traffic calming is physically altering the street with either a speed bump or narrowing of the street, or other, I think, chicanes, but the, the tip of the spear is, is there a problem? And hopefully, if there is, maybe some less drastic means would help if, you know, we put those additional things on the stop signs, you know, leading to County Line Road over there, so.
Right.
But we'll see.
Yeah, let's-
The police department is busy on looking at these and reviewing the details.
I hear speed bump a lot, and if we start putting speed bumps all over the town, it's going to destroy our plow equipment.
Yeah, I would not recommend that.
Because once you do that in one place-
And then what you get is people speeding between the bumps.
Right, and the sad part is, it's our residents that are doing the speeding. You know what I mean? It's not like it's people are coming in from out of town so we can race through Warminster. Everybody needs to take responsibility for their own driving and teach your children, because there's a lot of new drivers out there, kids with permits. As you're teaching your children how to drive, respecting the law, and it says 25, it says 25 for a reason, because usually there's children playing.
Doesn't get you there any faster, either.
It doesn't, because you usually get stopped. I mean, it's just, you know, one of those kind of things, but it's important that we, you know, that it's the residents that are doing the speeding, so shame on, you know.
You can't tell that to high school kids. I go up Centennial Road every morning, went to school, and that poor crossing guard, I mean, I think they play chicken with her.
I agree, I agree.
That poor crossing guard, oh, God.
Well, we'll have a, we'll have a look at it, and we'll see what we can do. All right, anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Consider approval of the Board of Supervisors minutes dated August 3rd, 2023. Consider approval of integrated library ILS agreement to allow the ability to share library materials and patron data through 2024. That's with the Bucks County Library System? Yes. Consider approval of IT agreement to have access to county IT resources and services through 2024. Consider Warminster Township Five Ponds Golf Course Architectural Proposal for Services and recommendation to award Sylvie Concrete Products for the 2023-2024 Roxol Contract through the Bucks County Consortium. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board?
I think these are all great ideas, with the getting, passing the integrated library to ability to share library materials, have access to IT resources and services through 2024. I like that. All the proposals, great.
Okay.
All right, just wanted to comment.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Any from the public? All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thank you. John, finance report?
Bill list.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Yes, you're right. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion. I'll ask for a second. Do we approve the bill list dated August 17th, 2023, in the amount of $1,283,068.14, and the supplemental bill list dated August 31st, 2023, in the amount of $597,827.21, for a total of $1,880,885.35.
I'll make a motion that we accept.
Second.
Okay. Questions or comments from the public? Call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Now you're up, John.
All right, so I'm just going to talk real briefly on the usual financial statements of saying, everything's kind of following the same trend as last month. And on the RealC Tech collection side, at the end of August, we're down to only $144,000 outstanding out of 8 million, so those collections are still going excellent.
Good.
The reason, I just want to be really brief, is that I do want to talk about, we started doing the budget process, and the big number that came in already is for our MMO. So, I'm going to do a quick little presentation, explain what MMO is, and a couple of quick definitions, then jump into the numbers real quick. Okay, so definitions, what is an MMO? It's, the amount that's calculated using actuarial sciences to ensure the municipal pension plans are sufficiently funded. The one thing the board has to do is by state law, is pass what we're going to put into it by the last business day of September, so we got till September 30th to pass what we want to put into the pension plans next year. So, this is a big budget number that we already have in. The next one is discount rate. So, this is pretty much just the assumed rate of return on what the market, the investments are going to make. Currently, we're at 8%. We're going to go into a little bit more on what the township is right now, but, so this is saying, we have this money, this is what it's going to make every year, so we can add that into what the balance is and make sure we stay solvent. Market value of assets. So, this is pretty much the planned assets. This is what we have at any given point. When calculating the MMO using this method, the actuary looks at what the total liability is, takes out what the current assets are, and based on whatever that discount rate, whatever we're going to be earning throughout the years, this is what we have to put into it, again, to keep the plan solvent. Another assumption that can be used instead of market value of assets is something called the smoothing method. So, this is taking the current assets, that actually kind of smoothes out any gains or losses over a time period, so that, and there's not as much fluctuation. Good definition for that is, the smoothing takes out the volatility of the market and gives the plans a chance to recover from bad years, which everyone knows last year was a terrible, terrible year in the market, and percentage of both gains and losses are held back to smooth out the ups and downs. So, we are using a four-year smoothing, so holding, we're holding back 75% of those losses from last year, but we're also holding back the gains from 2021 that we had, and kind of working them in together, so there's not a big jump up and down at any given point. Here's a quick history of MMO payments over the years. We can see, like, so in 2014, doing some research, that's when the township went to smoothing. It kind of goes up and down, and then in 2021, we went back to using those market value of assets because of the influx of cash that we had from the sale of the sewer system. So, that's why it went from pretty much $2 million to 2.7 million. The only other thing I'd really like to point out here is, it's the minimum municipal obligation. It's the minimum. We could always put more in. In 2016, you could see that we actually did put an extra $203,000 into the police pension plan. Not one year during this entire time period was extra money put into the plan, and that will come into play later, too. The same thing with the non-uniform plan. We can see how it shoots up in 2021, and then 2022 is less than what it was in the past because of how good the 21 market was. Again, only one year was more money put in than what was minimum, the minimum obligation. So, the discount rate, this was the second definition. So, we currently have an 8% discount rate. This is, all these numbers are directly out of our financial statements, so there are more definitions. I'm just trying to keep the focus narrowed a little bit. So, at an 8% discount rate, the net pension liability, which is saying, this is what the actual liability is, less the assets, at the end of last year, was almost $13 million for the police and 4.3 million for the non-uniform plan. The reason this is important, because you can see that it goes from, it kind of discloses what happens to that liability. If we change the rate by 1%, it jumps up $5 million for the police plan and 1.7 million for the non-uniform. Doing any kind of debt issues, I know it's not like on the near horizon, but this is the first thing bond readers look at, is what your net pension liability is, because this is a real liability that you're going to have to pay out in some years. So, we currently have a A rating for, which is investment grade with a low risk, but there are two other, there's double A and triple A that we would like to get to. So, changing the discount rate can really affect those ratings. So, with all that said, here are the MMO options for next year. First one, option one, keeping everything the same, pretty much, an 8% discount rate, keeping the market value of assets. Gives us a total cost of 3.7 million, and, but, which is an increase of almost 1.4. No municipal budget within the general fund is really prepared for a $1.4 million increase in one single year. So, that's going to be tough to do, but we have other options.
May I interject, Mr. Chairman, just for a minute? John's doing a great job, as usual. I just want to point out that whatever the board decides which one we're going to go with for 2024, the entirety of the funds comes out of the general fund. This is our largest general fund expense, right here, single largest, and it's two pension funds, one's for the police, one's the non-uniform. Combine those two funds right now, have defined benefit funds, 50 million, 5-0 million. So, we need to put in a couple, you know, a couple mil going forward every year. John used the word solvent, and, you know, we hear words to stress, this is a good, healthy fund. The problem is, we're not seeing any return on our investment. So, year after year, we have to put money in, just pay $3 million with the benefits with the benefits every year to the retirees, hoping we can get a little, like, 7%, if that says 8%?
So what you're saying, Tom, is we'll never attain the 8% mark, so why should we be doing that in the first place, correct?
Well, 8% is, everything comes down to what the auditor general says you can do. So there's a little from column A, a little from column B, but at no point is the investment ever going to match what the contributions are from both the township and the employees. The police, employees pay 5% of their wages into it. So I just wanted to make those statements, and I don't know if they help or hurt, but I'm going to turn the floor back over to Mr. Rainey. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Also, there, this is the minimum obligation.
Yes.
So keep that in mind.
Now that Tom stole my next sentence.
Stole your thunder again?
This is going to write to option two of lowering the discount rate to 7.5. Over the history since we've been with the current advisor, we've only gotten 6.3% since 2017. So lowering it down to a more reasonable 7.5 is way more realistic.
And that includes the contributions. That 6.3% includes the, that list you saw every year, the money the township puts into it. That's included in that rate.
All right. Well, we're going to address that as well.
Yep. So option two is the 7.5, keeping it at market value. The total cost is 4.3 million, with an actual just increase of almost $2 million of expenses to the general fund. Of the 1.4 was going to be hard, the 2 million is going to be very hard. So in this, there's tons of different options that we could do. These are just the three most realistic ones. Option three, which is my suggestion, is going to be lowering the discount rate, switching over to the smoothing method, so that we do not have to propose any kind of tax increase, or use reserves to balance the budget, which is, was done here for years, looking at the financial statements. A total cost of just under 3 million, which is only an increase of 539,000. 539 is a reasonable increase for this. But again, what I would suggest is, we budget this way, and as we get more of our budget numbers, we're still waiting on property liability, workers' comp, health insurance increases. We have other big numbers coming in. As we figure out what we have, that's when we can actually budget more than the MMO to try and get us back onto the market value of assets. So it's coming up with a plan of saying, hey, so we don't have to increase taxes or use reserves. This year, let's come up with a plan to switch it over and move it back.
And if I could just interject again, just to remind the board, last year, 1.5 million was put into the, uh, the other post-employment benefits trust. So we don't need to do that this year. So that's a plus, because that trust is up and running.
Yes.
We're starting to get, the new police officers have been hired and the new contract are making their contributions to it as the, as the paychecks roll along. So, yeah, but again, half a million dollars, right? I mean, it's half a million dollars.
Still got to find it somewhere.
Right.
So, John, you're, this option, depending on how the market behaves, which it seems to be behaving okay, general trends upward this year.
Yes.
This would be for one year, the smoothing method, if we can get out of it.
It depends. So the, a full actuarial study is done on a two-year basis.
Right.
We just got one. So this is year one of the next one. We won't get a full one until the end of 2024.
Right.
But they do take into account what the planned assets are when doing the MMO. So I would say, we're smoothing it over four years. If we could just do two years of smoothing with both years, saying, here's the MMO, let's add more to, so when we switch back, it's not this...
It's, it's not the kicking the can down the road for 10 years?
It's not that $700,000 increase that it went from 2020 to 2021.
Right.
So by adding that, it's, we could switch back at an easier, it wouldn't be as much of a hardship, and relying on a big revenue. We don't have another storm sewer system to sell, so.
And the, the payment due for '24 to the funds isn't going to be due for another year, literally another calendar year. So if between then and now, there's an opportunity to increase that payment to the board wish, we can do that.
Yeah, if I may, I do believe that we were, we've discussed a little bit of that, about increasing the minimum obligation.
Yeah. And I look at it as, all right, we switch over this other method with a plan to get back to that market value of assets.
Right.
And you're, and you have that plan, you just pretty much told us about it.
Yeah. Okay. The only other thing, I don't know if, Tom, if, do you want me to introduce personnel?
Oh, yes, please. Thank you.
So talking about the market returns and what the assumed interest rates are and everything like that, the pension board did authorize going out to RFP for new pension advisors.
And to the board of supervisors?
Yes, and, and the board of supervisors. So just to go over the process, I'm going to introduce Chris Engelbert, to just talk about the process in a timeline that we're looking at, doing all that.
Great, John, thanks. Sticking with the football theme, so I have 35 years of experience dealing with municipalities and defined benefit plans. So about six years ago, we came up with a product called RFP Referee, where what we do is we recuse ourselves from actually bidding on managing the defined benefit plan. So what we do is, we act as the RFP referee. We write the RFP, we publish it, we get the responses back, we then go through the responses, we write an executive summary that we give to the pension committee, and we go over it with them. In that executive summary, we talk about who are the most qualified pension advisors, we talk about costs, we also talk about pros and cons that they may have, we check their references very closely, believe it or not. Some of them give references that you wonder sometimes. So we've done nine of these projects over the last four and a half years. We've provided references to Tom and John, and so it's a really good process. We have the RFP about 95% written. John gave you some information tonight that I'm going to use to finish it. We're going to circulate a copy to Tom and John for them to review. We hope to release it to the public September 18th. A plan your size is probably going to get between 12 and probably 15 responses of companies that would like to manage your defined benefit plan. It's a large plan. It's an extremely competitive business. It will take us about two weeks to go through all the RFPs, where we quantify whether or not they've met the technical requirements of the RFP, what they need to be disqualified. Then we do a hour interview with each company to go over any of the aspects of the RFP that may not be clear. One of the things that, you know, we think our strength is doing this is, I myself answered hundreds of RFPs, which stands for request for proposal, and so I know what to look for, I know some of the things that sometimes could be misinterpreted. We then write a rough draft or executive summary that should be probably the first, done by the first week or so, second week of October. We share that with the pension committee, and then sometime, hopefully, late October, maybe early November, we'll actually have in-person interviews with the qualified respondents. You should probably have a pretty good idea if you're staying with the current company, if you're going to a new company, probably by the end of November sometime.
Will the board be involved in the interview process, or you handle that? I make recommendations to the board.
Well, we, we write our executive summary, and then we're going to give that to the pension committee, so.
Ultimately, the board will make the selection, yes, but we will probably weasel it down to a couple that we will...
Right. And then board representatives would sit in on the interviews.
Yeah, I imagine we would want to, yeah, and, and the committee, some members, some represent, representation from the committee, and, yes.
Right. Did I get that right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'll be voting for passport, uh, passbook savings.
[laughing]
So some members of the...
Pension committee.
Pension committee, considering all that, and you and I are on the, on the committee as well.
Because I think when we get down to final interviews and to make a choice who are pension investors, I think a couple of board members should be involved.
I agree.
Well, yeah. We are involved already.
I mean, directly involved in the interview. That was my question. Are you doing the interviews?
Yeah, I mean, so...
Will the board members be involved in the interviews?
What we typically, what we typically do is, we host a day of interviews. We suggest getting down to, you know, no more than six candidates, because we start at nine in the morning.
Oh, yeah, it's a long day. I've done it twice.
Yeah, okay. And so typically, by the end of it, we guide you through the process. Sometimes decisions are made quickly, others times they want to think about it for a couple of weeks, as hard as what they're going to do. But it'll, you know, we've done this now enough that I think we're going to be able to guide you with a very successful conclusion.
May I ask, when you say guide us, you could, do you give recommendations, like, which companies do you feel would be a best, better fit for, for our township?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay. Based on our financial situation?
Yeah. When I write my executive summary, I will color it, because there are some companies that are going to be better fits than others. So one of the projects that we did was for a very small municipality, a borough of $4 million. There was a couple of smaller companies that bid. They looked at, you know, one or two of them, they, you know, didn't feel quite comfortable, they went with another one. So it, it's all about fit. I mean, you know, you're hiring a pension consulting slash advisory slash investment firm, it's going to be handling your $50 million, and trying to make you money to help, obviously, offset, you know, funding costs that you have, so.
Thank you.
So we, we're good?
I'm okay with, with, as long as there's some people from the pension committee who have skin in the game, obviously.
Right. Well, I thought, when we get down to the few that are recommended for us to interview, that the board should be involved in the direct interviews at the end.
Well, at least, at least a few of us, anyway.
Past practice, right.
Right.
Right? Did I get that right?
Yeah.
So we would, you know, before it gets to that, we would, you know, it's like Goldilocks. Some, some of these firms are going to be too small.
Oh, yeah, we all whittle them down.
Some of them are going to be too big.
Right, right.
You know, that's what we need, the expertise.
Absolutely.
And then we'll...
When it gets, when we get down to where there's, there's firms that, it's time for the decision, then we'll definitely be involved.
Yeah, it's your decision.
That was, that's where I was going. Right, yeah.
And I think we actually were breaking out into two RFPs, right?
Uh, we were talking about doing pension first, and then the actuary after we've done the pension.
Right, oh, yeah, the actuary, too, yeah.
Okay. Do we have to take action to engage his firm, or?
Uh, we already did, but I don't think we have to take action to engage his firm. That was a decision of the...
No, that's fine. I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Why he's here, why he's here?
You need to vote on the...
MMO.
Well, we need to vote on the MMO, but that's under new business.
That's new business.
So, um...
Also?
Okay.
So we've seen that...
I mean, like, any, any other questions?
No, I'm, I'm good with the process.
Yeah.
Thank you, and nice to meet you.
Yeah. So I'm sure we'll be hearing from you and seeing from you in the next couple months.
Final comment?
Yeah.
Go Birds!
All right. All right. Yeah, I think it's time to have another look at, at the people that manage our pension funds.
Definitely.
I agree.
All right.
Exclamation.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right. No unfinished business. Let's go to new business. Okay, so I believe these are John's recommendations that we're considering here. All right. Consider a motion to approve the 2024 municipal, minimum municipal obligation for the township pension plan as follows. Police pension plan with a 7.5% rate and smoothing option, $2,332,888. Non-uniform pension plan with a 7.5% rate and a smoothing option totaling $543,919. And then the non-uniform defined contribution plan of $50,000. And I see that we're lowering the rate down, which is something that we needed to do anyway, at some point. Is there a motion?
I'm so moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I, I have a few. Just a couple of observations being, and I'll be leaving the board the end of the year. 12 years ago, when I arrived here, that MMO was $300,000 a year. It's now 3 point some million dollars. It's continued to grow, and continued to grow. Every year, I've heard from professionals, next year it's going to get better, and it's never gotten better. I don't know what the answer is. I'm not, since, I'm not a financial expert. We've changed pension managers twice. That hasn't solved the problem. It continues to grow. I mean, this, this, this has, we have to take a serious look at how to fix this. And, I mean, I've been dealing with this for 12 years. I haven't, and watched it grow, and it's got complete inaction from every board that I've sat on, that, whether it be a liquidation of an asset, or raising taxes, no, 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 no. It's up to 3.2 million, and it's growing, and growing, and growing. And so at some point, this, this has to be dealt with.
This is, this is not just...
And I think we're taking the appropriate action here, and I will be voting for this action. I think we're taking the appropriate action, but...
This is, this is a, this is a problem across the entire country.
I know it is. I know it is.
So, you know, it's just something that we have to deal with. You know, again, to Tom's point, we have $50 million in, in the, in the one pension plan. I mean, these are not distressed pensions. So, you know...
But this minimum obligation is, is, is more than our general fund can handle. We've known this for a long time.
Well...
It's, you know, it's what part of our budget out of balance to begin with.
The problem is, if you put, if you put all the money back into that pension, you're still going to have an MMO.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but getting it back in...
And, but as, so if you put, and this is what we talked about before, if you put $30 million into the pension, and it, and the, and the markets have a bad year, you've lost $20 million.
Right.
So to me, with a health, with a pension fund that's not distressed, it doesn't make any sense to sell assets and...
But my point is that this, this is more than a general fund can handle. We don't have the mileage, or the taxing ability, to keep up with this.
But that's the county's problem.
We don't. Well, actually, it's our, it's our problem, because we have to deal with...
Well, we go right back to what we said before.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
There, there hasn't been a reassessment in Bucks County since 1973, I think it was?
74.
74, okay. Every other county around us has done it six times. So, you know, it's, it's...
50 years.
Yeah, 50 years of no property assessments. And, you know, none of the other counties or municipalities are having problems. None of them, because they did the right thing.
In those counties, yeah.
Yeah, in the other counties, that's right.
Montgomery County's got a problem. And with the exception of the police situation, the, the, the defined benefit pension is no longer offered to non-police.
New hires.
New, new, new hires.
Right. But we'll see our way out of that in the future.
Right. So there's a few at-will employees that are still eligible, and there are several afshme employees that are still eligible. Once they're all out and retired, then there's no, the, the actuary will be focused on them alone. They won't, don't, won't be worried about the next group coming up behind it. The police, it's going to be there for a while until, and if we somehow negotiate it out of the contract, which would be extraordinary.
Because I'm sure 10 out of 12 years that I've been here, every year we've adopted a budget, I've held it up and said, this is a problem. And it's growing, and growing, and growing. And here we are again.
I don't, I, 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 it is a problem, but I just don't, you know, the solution to the problem is that somebody has to have the intestinal fortitude at a higher level than us, and do the right thing.
I don't disagree with you. I don't.
So...
But unfortunately, it's being dumped into our lives.
Right. I mean, you know, to sell the municipal authority as an asset, which is really the only asset we have, that's a permanent tax, because that'll increase every year, because it'll PUC. Look at all the other townships, consult it.
That they did. And not, and not, and not only that, then you lose control of, of your water, which none of the residents wanted to do. Plus, it, we were able to get a lower interest rate for one of the loans, because we are, it is our most valuable asset. We don't want to lose that. So I agree with that.
Not only that, I mean, it's, people are paying triple, and that's just the start.
Yeah.
So that, I don't, I don't think that's our answer either. So, I mean, for the time being, until people do the right thing, regardless of who they are, we'll just have to deal with it.
We, the, the township, like so many other townships in the area, we're, we're lucky. I mean, we came out of the pandemic, and there was no hit. There was no financial hit to it. I mean, there was no, everyone was worried about how it's going to impact the earned income tax. Were people going to be able to pay their tax bills? Were, you know, were businesses going to stay open? And all that came through in a positive light. We might not be so lucky the next time, you know? But for now, and...
So there is no more pandemics.
Yeah, well, yeah, we could hope, right? It's all the worst, and I, I'm sorry, I'm cutting into the board debate here, but, you know, we're paying for promises made in the past, and we're making promises to future boards. We're putting them on the hook. Every time we renew a contract that says there's going to be defined benefit, retirement benefit for, for employees, police or not, we, we put the, we put the future generation on the hook.
Well, that's been going on for quite some time.
Oh, yeah.
I do want to say, John has given an excellent presentation, has explained all of the options fair, in depth, and now it's up to us to decide what is best as the fiduciary of the township for our residents.
I agree.
We made the mention of, so, of the finishing discussion.
And it was seconded, yeah.
And I'm, I'm done with discussion.
Is there any comments from the public? And this problem will be here for forever.
Yeah, it's like I said, but I've just watched it grow. It was 300,000.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get it. And a new car, and a new car was, you know, 25,000 ten years ago.
Mr. Chairman, you're voting on all three at the same time, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, we're voting on all three.
Okay. Any, any comments?
All right, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. And John, we trust that someday you'll figure us a way out of this.
What else?
Yeah, I know you will.
I'll be watching.
I know you will.
Well, hope with...
Because every other township across the state will, will adopt it.
Yeah, that's, something has to be done. I'm saying, it's, and it is dumped on us. It is. But we're at ground level here, and this is our responsibility. Something has to be done, I'm saying, it's, and it is dumped on us, it is, but we're at ground level here and this is our responsibility.
Well, if you want to take some positives out of this, we lowered the discount rate.
That is, that's a huge positive.
That's huge.
That, that is, we've been looking to do that for three years.
For 8%, for as long as that's been, is.
And that is huge, we've been looking to do that for a couple of years.
I know.
Right, cause it, again, we were getting nothing, we were never going to reach that, you know, that benchmark, especially with, with the way the market is. So I'm glad we reached.
And quite honestly, um, our, um, our investments are underperforming as well.
Yes.
And that's a big problem as well. So, uh, if we can correct at least the underperformance and get the discount rate lower for the time being, there's two, there's two moves that have a positive effect in the long term.
Well, you know what, a great positive effect would be like what John had said about putting more money in as we can do that. So if you're, we're not just be putting, it's like if you have a credit card bill, if you're only going to make the minimum payment, you're never going to get through it. So I like that idea, John, I want to thank you again for the.
Well, John, I won't know until we get to our other costs or our cost commitment. I know our healthcare is going to go up, well, that's sure, naturally it is.
What does it go up? Besides taxes?
Judy!
Right.
Okay.
Who just said taxes are going up?
Nobody, taxes are not going up.
Nobody said that.
No, no, no.
All right, part B. How about we consider the award of the Public Works Above Ground Storage Tank upgrades? And I'm sure, uh, our Public Works people will be thrilled at this, it's about time. To Petroleum Technologies Inc. in the amount of $304,440 for all items under the base bid and option two. Subject to verification that their firm meets the requirements of the responsible contractor's ordinance, number 729, as amended by ordinance number 767. Is there a motion?
Oh, I move that we can, that we award the, uh, storage tank upgrades to Petroleum Technologies.
I'll second.
Okay. And just for everyone's, uh, verification here, we've had, um, the piping system from our fuel tanks for the police and firemen and, and our public works vehicles, um, is old. It's, uh, it was leaking. We had to, uh, have some environmental work done, remove some soil. It, it'll, not a great cost because it wasn't that bad, but we have to, we have to redo all the piping to the dispensers. Um, and this, uh, this takes care of all that.
Yeah, this is a job that has to be done.
It has to be done, yes.
Hey, this isn't coming out of ARPA money, is it? It's just coming straight from capital.
I think it's coming from the capital, yeah. Is that correct, or John left? Well, is it coming out of ARPA money?
I think some of it was.
Some of it?
I'm, I'm not sure, we bounced around a little bit at the end.
Yeah, I forget, you know, I know we've been.
There might have been a little bit left.
Right.
I can't remember at this point, to be honest with you.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm going to touch on that subject on my report, but we had 3.2 million from ARPA and 12 million from the Del Valle loan. And, uh, we, with the, with the ability to use liquid fuels for road-based projects, I think this, John left, but I think we can also use some of it for this project.
Oh, really?
I think. Because it's related to.
Roads, roads.
Roads.
Okay.
And also the, you know, just what we had in the, the number's much bigger than anybody thought it was going to be. It's at least twice as high as.
Well, we had trouble finding the contractor.
We had trouble finding qualified contractors.
I think we're not, not quite twice, but we're also going, I point out, a brand, brand new system. Instead of doing repairs, so that's where the, the cost, original estimates and Public Works in our office, we're trying to do repairs and to, to the system, the management system. So, uh, they'll take care of the tanks, I mean, even electrical work is like 35,000 for this.
So, we're not putting a Band-Aid on it?
No, this has to be.
And it has to get done, it has to get done correctly. And, um, you know, quite honestly, I'm, I'm happy to see that we're not putting Band-Aids on everything anymore and having them break and fail and.
Yep.
Cause it costs, it just keeps adding to the costs.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, there was two bids, um, just for the record, the first bid was, um, not complete. There were missing items, so, um, you only had received one complete bid. I know they've already indicated at a pre-bid meeting that they feel they meet the RCO, but, uh, how you're, you're set up here is we award to, uh, to the lowest bidder and then the review of the RCO is, is handled administratively and if they meet it, we move forward.
That's correct.
Um, if they don't, then, but we'll have issues, but, um, they feel they, they do meet that ordinance requirement.
Well, I hope we get it through this time, this has been, this is long overdue.
Yeah, yeah. All right, any other questions or comments, maybe from the public? All right, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0, thank you. Thomas, you're up.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'd like to use my time for the township manager's report to review and reflect on the capital improvement projects that have been, uh, engaged, accomplished and are in process from '22 to this year, 2023. And it's a significant list. Uh, the, the, the top one, of course, has to be Shenandoah Woods. And I, and any opportunity the board supervisors has to take a victory lap on this, I encourage it. Uh, so last year, the houses, the Navy Houses were demolished, then shortly thereafter, after some, some discussions with, uh, about what permitting was going to be needed, the, uh, the ramps, uh, excuse me, the, the slabs were removed. Uh, we, we're hoping that, uh, now that we, you know, that, that large part of that project is now done. We're not going to have to repeat that spending. We do have some funding opportunities the next couple of years, including $600,000 possibility from the state, $1 million possibility from the feds for the next, uh, for the next steps with, uh, with Shenandoah Wood turning it into a passive recreation facility. Jess is working with Gilmore and Associates on coming up with a concept land. And if the board is, is comfortable with that and approves that, then we can start putting in some meat on the bones to get an understanding of what those funds are going to be. But the demolition of the Houses at Shenandoah Woods is a, is a huge accomplishment and the board should take a great deal of pride in that. Uh, and, uh, it's, it's, it's gone, they're gone, it's done, it's over. And with regards to having been able to use some ARPA money and some of that 12 million, you know, we borrowed 14-point whatever million dollars, 12 million was for capital improvement, and that's all a big, a big portion of it. Great, great, great undertaking by the, uh, by the board and by the township. Uh, additionally, we had, uh, in 2022 and 2023, uh, uh, JDM RC did, uh, six and eight miles of paving. Uh, last year we spent 1.195 million, uh, on the milling and paving. And this year, 1.65 million with, I think we did like an extra mile and a half over last year. Of course, as is required, we also had to, uh, bid out the, uh, the ADA curb ramp installation. For both years went to NJS, uh, 601,800 last year, this year, 300, excuse me, I'm reading the wrong one. I'm sorry, I got the wrong one here, I'm going to skip that one there for now. All right, so moving on to, uh, some of the upcoming projects that we have. Uh, we've got the, the lighting at Werner Park, which is going to start in October. Car and Duff's been awarded the contract. Great project for the facilities of that, the football field, the baseball field, new lighting, new electrical, a generational improvement.
And that's ARPA money.
That's ARPA money.
That's ARPA money.
Yeah, this is all from the same.
Right.
Uh, so that's, uh, $729,250. Excuse me. Uh, so we also have, uh, you know, the, the Ben Wilson Center, I keep saying it's done?
It's close.
The HVAC at Ben Wilson, of the Ben Wilson Senior Activities Center. Uh, so most of that work was done last year, uh, for, uh, $504,000. We're waiting on the generator portion now. This generator portion is that if we need to use the Ben Wilson Center as an emergency shelter during, uh, storms or hurricanes, going to need a generator. So we're still waiting on that generator to show up. It's being fabricated and it's being on, on its way to, to Warmster Township.
So supply issue.
Oh, yeah, that stuff, stuff to get.
Supply everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So that's $185,000. Again, this is all good stuff. Uh, the, uh, the library bathroom project, which was awarded last meeting for $301,500 to put in a family ADA bathroom at the Warmster Free Library and also do some, some other minor work in and around that area of the library. Uh, we just had the, uh, awarded the, uh, the fuel tank replacement project, $304,440. What else? Uh, we're, we're still, we don't know what we're going to be doing with how much the security cameras we're going to talk about. We just, we had the, the RFPs underway, we had a meeting the other day with the firms that might be interested in doing it. A lot of questions came up that, uh, we're trying to answer and we're giving actually tomorrow at our various facilities, library, the, uh, West Bristol Road Facility, uh, the Ben Wilson Center, Warmster Community Park. We're going to have little tours of the facility for the interested parties. The department heads will be there to help them out with that. So all told, two years' worth of, uh, capital improvements, uh, some of which are done, some of which are pending. Uh, ju- just a little bit over $8 million, uh, that the township spent on that. And when you consider that a lot of these things, hopefully, once done, we're never, we not got to worry about it for another 20 years or so, it's a, it's a positive thing. And the reason I wanted to bring it up is because we've talked about these projects a lot at these meetings. We've had bid openings, we've had progress reports. I just thought it might be useful just to say, as we're starting the projects, uh, sorry, the budget for 2024, all these things have happened in the last two years and are happening. And so, uh, I guess that's it. Thank you for listening, I hope that made sense. Probably not.
Nope.
I loved it.
Thanks.
Now, we put a lot of, uh, I know the, uh, the infrastructure committee, Mark was on that, I was on that. We thought, um, we actually went through what really needed to get done. There was a lot of thought put into this and the board, um, agreed with our recommendations and I thank the board for that. I mean, we put a lot of, um, we invested a lot of money in the township and we're going to continue to do that, because that's the right thing to do. So, uh, thanks, Tom. All right.
That's all I have, thank you.
Who's next?
Mr. Flagler.
Board's approval to represent the board, enjoy the football game.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
I know how to give a report.
Yeah, that's right. It's all, it's all right in here. Yeah, we've got 15 minutes. Mr. Catter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you have our September's interview report. I believe Tom just went through every single one of them on my page one.
Pretty much.
And I have no other additions, so thank you.
How about, how about Arby's?
Yes, here we go.
Good, we're good. Arby's.
That's next year.
Any word?
Uh, they had some, I think it was building permit issues.
Really?
They have the meats.
Yeah, they have the meats.
But they said that last month.
It's an existing building.
What?
That was the answer last month when we asked the question.
They had the pre-construction meeting, but I don't.
Oh, yeah, it's not on my, well, put it this way, it's not on my end.
Okay. It's not a land development, right?
No.
Okay.
All right.
No, there's, unfortunately, there's plenty of other permits and stuff they need.
It's an existing building.
No, it's founded, I can tell you what it's, it's about an issue about where they want to have the takeout window.
Oh, okay.
The wide, it goes over to the giant problem.
Oh, I got you.
The gas pumps next to it.
I understand, I got you.
See, that's more than I knew.
I didn't know, I'm, I'm out of the loop.
That was always the, the only real issue for the place to worry about.
Thanks, Craig.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Is there enough business to have a second meeting?
Oh, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, second meeting acts September, I don't think.
No objections?
Any objections?
No objections.
No objections.
No objections here as well. So the next meeting will be, uh.
October.
October, yes.
Fifth?
Is that the first Thursday?
Yep.
Okay.
October 5th.
October 5th, any, right, okay.
All right. Anything else, Tom?
No, sir.
All right, second round, anybody?
Listen, I know football's on, so I'm not going to take long. Five Green, 90 to 6-muor road. And I didn't plan to speak tonight, but with the MMO thing, it just popped a couple of questions in my head and I'm not here to ruffle any feathers, I'm, I'm confused and need some clarity. Two years ago, in 2021, when the board spoke about this, you were strongly against the smoothing, um, option of this plan. I mean, there was phrases like kicking the can down the street or just.
Smoothing method, yes.
Smoothing method, I'm sorry.
And we're still opposed to it.
Okay, you know, so I'm just, I'm just confused because it seems like we always kick stuff down the road in the can. You know, we took a big loan out to paint roads, that's going to be paid over a long period of time. Now the smoothing, you know, um.
And that makes perfect sense, too, to, to, to pave, to, to spread that out over years, the paving.
Okay, I mean, I'm, you know.
Yeah, I mean, John will explain that to you.
I just, what made the flip-flop from this being a bad idea to, was there no other solution? Was this like a, a surprise? Oh, can you forecast how high the increase is going to be, is what I'm asking?
No.
This was a surprise, I didn't expect it.
This was a surprise, yes.
I thought I would be long gone when this thing spiked again.
Right.
I did.
Yeah, now, it, it, it all depends on how the markets move, because all the pension monies are invested in different markets.
Okay.
And when the markets don't do well, the MMOs go up.
Right. And the store would sell.
So, but here's, here's the difference.
Yes.
Why, why we were opposed to it before. We don't want, we're going to get off the smoothing method as fast as possible.
Okay.
Okay? Rather than staying on it for 10 years or whatever it was. Um, and, and John could speak to that as well. But, but for the, for the short term, rather than petitioning the courts to raise taxes to pay for the pensions.
Right.
We would, we, we're going to spread it out over four years, but add additional funds. So.
Lower the rate.
It'll. Yeah, it'll, it'll lower the, the rate.
Right, which we saw.
Right.
Lower the rate.
Well, we lowered the rate and then the MMO comes out to an additional half a million dollars, but we're hoping to put in around 800,000 or more, so then it's not really smoothing. It kind of becomes almost market value.
Got you, okay.
Okay.
What happens next year?
Well, if the markets keep going the way they're going, it'll go down.
Right, so, but if, you know, it stays the way it is, are we going to smooth it again next year?
Well, that's our financial director, because he's the whiz.
Okay, okay.
You can't, you can't run the township, you can't run any big company or township like a household.
Right.
You have to have debt and you have to, and you have to manage your, your funds. I mean, it's a, what's our budget, John?
Whatever, 30 million.
30 million dollar budget?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, you can't operate, like, I'll pay my mortgage off and then, you know, and then I don't have a mortgage, because first of all, you know, and then I don't have a mortgage, because first of all, and John can explain this better, but it, it's better to take out loans to pave roads, because you receive the benefit of that, and then when you move, the, the next person that takes, buys your house also pays for the road paving, that he, that's been done already. So it's not, I mean, you spread it out over the township over years, so the costs are not.
I plan on dying in Warminster. I'm not going anywhere.
Well, me too, Bob.
Now, listen.
So I guess we'll be paying for roads the rest of our lives, right?
As I said, I was not a pair pointing finger.
Yeah, no, I understand.
You know, I was a little confused, and I needed some clarity on.
Well, there's some other, there's some other things, like if we stayed on the smoothing met, or the, the market value method, that the, the percent funded goes way down.
And we were able to do that because of the sale of Stormwood last year. That's how we hit the market value.
Couple of years ago. No, well, actually, the market, the market performed wonderfully over, over a couple of years.
Okay.
Now, we just got our, our reevaluation over the last two years, I believe, right, John? And the market didn't perform as well. And our manager, our fund managers, did not perform.
Okay.
They underperformed. So we're, we're addressing that right now with the RFP.
Okay.
And, and that's been a problem for a while. We've been looking at that, and we've been challenging them. And so we're going to, we're going to address that as well.
All right. I appreciate it. So watch some football.
All right.
All right.
Go Birds, right?
Thank you.
Additionally, Mr. Chairman, if I could, we got this, we got this MMO lightning bolt about three or four weeks ago.
Right.
So that consultant also, we're looking to shop and get a new one.
That's right.
So maybe we get a new one, they'll start talking to us in May or June, instead of waiting until September, or the middle of August to tell us.
August.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's when we found out, you know.
And by the way, yeah, you gotta sign it by the end of September, and they start talking to us about it in August.
We had, we had a pension meeting in August. I asked John, the MMO come in yet? I got a call the next day.
Right.
Funny you asked. Came in today.
And he mailed it to us like snail mail, instead of emailing it to us like normal. And, you know, and there's things in that, and the sheets are in your packets, like, okay, it doesn't, it's not intuitively understood, but looking at the factor, the factors.
There was a lot of, yeah, there were a lot of things that we questioned them on, and we didn't get, you know, like the assumed rate, which was at 7%, I believe.
Well, then you allow to change it from eight to 7.5.
Yeah, then we asked them, well, who authorized that? Because the board never authorized to change an assumed rate, and they said, oh, I, you know, we just did it.
So I'm hoping with a, with a new, a better consultant, a newer consultant, new consultant, better communication, a little more warning than, you know, a month for our biggest, could be our biggest expense. Thank you.
Anything to add, John?
Thank you.
Tom wants to go for football, too.
Perfect, one minute show, perfect.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, yeah.
Come on, John. You haven't, we, we didn't see you last.
Yeah, John, his pension. He's got to keep up with his, his best.
Come on down.
He wants to get, he wants to get that award for Best Supporting Act.
That's right.
Right, John?
There you go. John Preo was 674 Joseph Avenue. Just on the, we'll touch it on the pension thing. You never know if Brian's fishing around up, up in, in Harrisburg. Maybe he can see if we can get some funds, maybe a grant or something like that, or maybe they can talk about subsidizing some of the help we need for this. It's possible. We've gotten some money for that, for the pension, so.
There's some stated, yes.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not, you know, the end of the world, but we're doing, I think we're doing a pretty, pretty good job. The other thing is, I don't know if we, the roving food truck, I don't know.
He's over at, he's over.
He's had a lot of press on Facebook.
He's over at George's now.
Yeah, he's down the street. I mean, I don't know.
He's across the street from me now.
And those, and those bad township supervisors made a move, I read.
Oh, really?
One of the comments.
So I don't know if we're, if he's, you know, if we're, he's allowed to do that or not, you know? I don't know. I didn't see him move in the middle of the night, but I don't know if anyone was watching either.
We were going to move it with, you know, like they moved the space shuttle in Southern California, Big Braid.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Part of that is, though, under litigation.
There you go.
But.
Yeah, I knew.
But I know that the, the, the location that, I believe is the, the new one, was discussed with both the, the Township L9 apartment and with the solicitor, was appropriate as far as the zoning ordinance goes.
Okay.
Where before it was not. It was also on a parking space. It was in a setback. It was all kinds of problems.
On top of gas tanks.
Yeah.
On top of gas tanks.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, John, before you sit, I know he wasn't a Warminster resident, but we all know him. Would you mention Vince?
Vince Hill.
Yeah, I meant to mention it earlier to me.
Yeah, a few weeks ago. A lot of people knew him. He, he was not just, just the Upper Southampton. He, he came out of Somerton, up into Feasterville, Upper Southampton, very active. He knew everybody in the, you know, in the township down there as well. And up here, too, he knew a lot of people in Warminster and all. Very active in sports and William Tennant, his family with coaching and stuff at the school. And Vince did a lot of coaching and inspired a lot of young kids, and a lot of people looked up to him. He was a perfect individual. Couldn't say anything bad about this guy.
Yeah, he was a good guy.
Yeah, he was, he was, he was, he was just an amazing guy. Worked for me for, when he retired. Over the years, he was in the car business. He always brought me stuff up that he couldn't do, like at work or whatever, his neighbors. And he always said, hey, when I retire, I'm going to come work for you. And the day he did, he came up and he sat down in the chair, and him and my dad, you know, spent a lot of time together, and then I spent a lot of time. But I've known Vince since I was 14, so I had a lot of time and talked to him every day. So he's going to be missed.
Yeah, he'll be missed.
His family is going to miss him as well. They're, they're outstanding family people, and Vince was the ultimate family man. He went, he, over and above for the kids, the grandkids, the vacations, all the things that he did for everybody, and not just his family, his people around him. If you made a phone call, he would, he would, he'd drop what he was doing, he'd go out and help you. If your car was stuck, he'd go out and help you. He was that, that kind of person. He'd pick your car up on the way in, he'd drop it off at the end of the day.
Many days, he gave me a ride home from a shot.
Yeah, Marcus, a lot of people that you, the people that went in there knew who he was, but he's going to be a very, very missed person, you know? So have a good weekend.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
I meant to bring that up.
Go Birds, right?
Yeah.
You know.
That's right.
Brian's the only smart one. Bought airline tickets, first row, 20-yard line in Boston.
Who's going?
Ryan. Ryan, the guy that worked at a body shop.
Oh.
He's going all the way.
All right, all right.
That's the way to do it. We got, we got to 20-yard line at the kitchen.
There you go.
Between the kitchen and the dining room, right?
That's right. It's the best I can do. Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
All right, anyone else? All right, let's move on to supervisors' comments. I just want to thank a lot of people for the kind words they've been giving me and the encouragement. I'll have more news for you next month, but thank the board and thank a lot of people for the kind words. I'll be going to the hospital for surgery tomorrow, and I, I appreciate all the, all the encouragement. Thank you very much.
Stay strong, Ken.
Yep. That's all I have. Kath?
I just wanted to tell everyone out there, all the folks watching, thanks for watching, all the folks here, thanks for supporting us. I'd also say enjoy the rest of your summer. It's going to be over soon. Who knows with the weather, though? And that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Mark?
And I wish you all the best tomorrow.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I really do. And I need you to get better by the next meeting, because silly season will be in full swing by then.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Can't wait.
Get well by the next meeting. But no, I wish you all the best, and we're phone call away from you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Janice?
I just want to say goodnight and thanks to everyone, and Ken will be praying for you.